And Councilor Wad in seconding. All in favour? Carry on. Disclosure of peculiar area of interest, if any? None noted. This is a meeting of council for information purposes. The only ones that will be able to ask questions tonight will be members of council asking questions of clarification. And if council follows through, there will be other meetings where other people may be able to ask questions. The presentation will be on North Huron's website tomorrow. And people may do written questions to Dwayne Evans, our CAO. And they will get written answers. And those questions and answers will also go on the North Huron website. So without any further things, Sergeant Colbert-Diol will lead off with the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Reeve Vincent, members of council, Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Dwayne Evans, Chief of Wingham Police Service, Chief Timothy Poole, and members of the community present in the gallery behind me here. My name is Colbert Diol and I'm a sergeant with the Municipal Policing Bureau of the Ontario Provincial Police. And it's my honour to be presenting the OPP costing proposal before you this evening. In attendance with me today are Inspector Jason Union, our detachment commander for Huron County Detachment, my partner Sergeant Peter Marshall, who's assisted me in preparing this presentation, my manager Staff Sergeant Leanne Sponkojenga Spon. The costing was requested by the township of North Huron-Wingham Ward through a letter sent to the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services. Our purpose here today is to provide you with information about policing services provided by the OPP and the cost for those services. We are not here to compare the OPP with the Wingham Police Service. We currently have a great working relationship with the members of Wingham Police Service. And regardless of the outcome of this costing, we want to continue working together with the goal of maintaining the safety and security of the residents and visitors to this area. My objective today is that at the conclusion of this presentation, you will have a clear understanding of the OPP's proposal in order to assist you in making an informed decision on your community's future policing needs. That being said, you will receive a lot of information today. And I suggest that you keep some notes and review the material that we have provided to you. Should you require further information or clarification, we can provide that to you through my contact with the municipality, the CAO, Mr. Evans. I've also confirmed with Reeve Vincent as well as Mr. Evans that in an effort to maintain transparency, all provided material, questions and responses will be provided to the public on your municipal website. In addition to a copy of this presentation, you have been provided with the contract proposal, our 2016 annual report, our OPP policing services profile, and a police services board governance document which outlines the difference between a Section 10 Police Service Board and a Section 31 Police Service Board which you currently have here in Wingham. Today, we will be addressing the following areas: provincial support, regional support, services delivered by the detachment, OPP accountability and reporting, the transition contract, and the cost for policing the township of North Huron-Wingham Ward. Following the presentation, we can answer questions from council for clarification based on today's proposal. Here we have an organisational chart of the organisation. Our Commissioner Vince Hox, our provincial commander Mary Silverthorne, and our three deputy commissioners Brad Blair, Rick Barnum, and Gary Couture, along with the program areas each is responsible for. The OPP is a provincial police service. As such, our commissioner reports to the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services. The OPP was formed in 1909 and has a very long and rich history of providing municipal policing in Ontario. We have been policing municipalities in the province under contract since the 1940s. We police 323 of the 444 municipalities on a cost recovery basis. Currently, we have 111 contracts serving 144 municipalities, as well as 179 municipalities receiving policing services from the OPP under a Section 5.1 Police Service Act non-contract arrangement. The OPP cost recovery process is mandated and geared to achieving fair cost recovery from the municipalities and services. Our latest annual report, which is in your package, gives you a snapshot of the OPP in 2016. It provides an overview of the extensive services we deliver under both our provincial and municipal mandates. It also includes a segment on OPP policing costs which may be of particular interest to you. The scope of our responsibilities includes traffic safety and community policing, combating organised and technically complex crimes, and emergency response and crime prevention. While these are all day-to-day activities, they are not static. We remain committed to delivering policing services that are intelligence-led and applying analytics in the deployment of resources to target public safety trends. With over 8,300 members assigned to more than 190 working locations across Ontario, we have vast experience in both municipal as well as provincial policing across the In the next few slides, I'll provide an overview of the resources and services available to Wingham that are managed at a provincial as well as a regional level. Although the OPP is large, the members that serve Wingham will continue to provide policing services that cater to the people and the needs of your community. There are benefits and economies of scale of being part of a larger organisation. Should your city municipality accept the OPP proposal, you will receive extensive administrative and operational support through our general headquarters located in Arilia and our regional headquarters located in London. Available to Wingham are many OPP specialists that will assist local members by providing them with investigative support and expertise as needed. Further details on those services and others can be found in your handouts. By choosing to be policed by the OPP, you are contracting a turnkey operation. We do all the heavy lifting, if you may say, leaving your police services board to engage with the detachment commander to ensure areas of concern are addressed. The administrative support your municipality receives will save your staff time and allows them to focus on greater projects within your community. With over 100 years of policing experience in both rural and urban settings, policies are developed and maintained to improve policing and limit risk. The OPP is liable for any damages that may arise from any negligent acts or omissions by its members. The OPP is accountable to the municipalities that we serve at all levels of the organisation. It is affirmed provincially by our Commissioner Vince Hox, by the Regional Commander Chief Superintendent John Kane, and locally by our detachment commander Inspector Jason Union. The in-service training, or IST, programme as it's referred to, is designed to offer professional instruction to OPP employees annually. Instruction is provided for mandatory trainings in the areas you see before you. In-service training is a division of our Ontario Provincial Police Academy located in Arilia at our general headquarters. There are 15 deployed in-service training facilities across the province providing training for every region. Ontario Regulation 399 sets up requirements for adequate and effective policing services. Adequacy and effectiveness of the OPP is monitored both internally by our quality assurance unit, as well as externally by the provincial auditor who conducts audits at regular intervals and follows up to monitor any items requiring corrective action. Now that I have provided you with some information about our services on a provincial as well as regional level, I would like to play a short video on our integrated service delivery model, after which Inspector Jason Union will provide you with information regarding
The Ontario Provincial Police operate out of host detachments, satellite offices, five regional headquarters, one divisional headquarters, and a general headquarters, with a footprint that covers more than 1.1 million kilometres of land and 100,000 kilometres of waterways. The OPP currently provides policing services to more than 320 municipalities on a cost recovery basis. Detachments operate on an integrated service delivery model which allows for the blending and sharing of resources. Detachment officers provide policing services to one or more municipality and also provide policing services on King's Highways, provincial parks and waterways in accordance with provincial obligations. Officers in detachments are not designated as municipal or provincial officers and will often work in multiple locations during a shift. Integrated service provides the OPP with more flexibility to meet changing policing demands at a lower cost than having one standalone detachment serving a single municipality. It allows municipalities and the province to share the cost of detachment supervisory and administrative positions and detachment infrastructure. Combining the resources required to police multiple municipalities within one detachment provides a larger number of officers to draw on for major occurrences and emergencies. Detachments can direct more resources to a major occurrence without relying on overtime. The integrated service model also allows for coordinated policing strategies for issues that often span multiple jurisdictions. Being part of a larger, regional-type policing model offers communities the opportunity to engage and partner with other community safety and wellness agencies outside of municipal boundaries. Regional and general headquarters supply regular and specialty resources to detachments as needed. The OPP utilises daily activity reporting as a system to record the time and location an officer works to ensure municipalities do not pay for provincial policing obligations. The OPP does not typically provide a standalone or independent policing option as the integrated model is more efficient and works best with the OPP's footprint across the province.
I will now turn the presentation over to Inspector Jason Union, detachment commander of Huron County OPP detachment. He will provide you with an overview of the proposed amalgamated structure and the police policy and the policing deployment.
Well, good evening. Pleasure to see some familiar faces up here on the stage and of course, in the body of the room. We appreciate and I appreciate the opportunity and I extend my thanks to the Reeve, to the councillors, and again, the general public for allowing me to participate in this portion of the presentation. This is, this is a part of the presentation, of course, that, that hits near and dear and home to me as a detachment commander here in Huron County. I'd been here for about just over two years as the detachment commander here on county. I have 17 years of policing experience with the OPP, born and raised as an OPP officer, had a father that served the OPP for 30 years, and have a background before policing in healthcare as a registered nurse and still hold my certification just in case the OPP decides one day to get rid of me and I can go back to another, to another profession. But some of those skills and some of the different areas that I've worked across in southwestern Ontario and northern Ontario, I have to say, and this isn't part of my script, but having been here in Huron County for two years now, I can tell you, it is, it is one of the most unique detachments that I have ever worked in. And not unique bad, but unique good. We have some of the best officers, we have some of the most committed individuals that are linked to the community, the likes of which I have never really seen in 17 years and in various places across Ontario. So I, I have to, have to sing the praises of our officers and the great job that they do. And I'll take this opportunity just to, of course, give you a better idea of the OPP locally for you as opposed to from a general headquarters or regional headquarters perspective. When we talk about the integrated service delivery, I'm not going to read these slides to you because you have them in your package, but it provides an opportunity for the OPP as an integrated model to provide service to many municipalities. You would, you would be aware that in Huron County there are nine municipalities, three of which are under contract under Section 10 of the Police Services Act, and of course, the other six that are under contract like North Huron is under Section 5.1. And the video explains it quite well with pictures, which I always appreciate. But the fact that, that we are able to respond and we are able to move on a daily basis by sharing administration, whether that's front counter reception, whether that's supervisors that work on a shift, it certainly provides us a fair amount of flexibility in a dynamic and highly, I should say, dynamic world of policing. And of course, it talks about officers providing municipal and provincial policing duties. We have members in our detachment that are highly trained, that oftentimes are called upon to go and do provincial work, and they do it well. And of course, we reap the benefits of that here locally when, when things of quite significance take place in, in the county. And I'll, I always go back to the Godrich tornado, certainly, we in Huron County would certainly benefit from the provincial policing duties of an integrated police service where a significant event takes place and it requires resources that go beyond that that Huron County can provide. And so we benefit certainly from those. The more of the benefits, enhanced flexibility in meeting fluctuating demands at a lower cost, and the economies of scale, sharing resources, the uniforms that we buy, to buy for thousands of members, the supplies that we buy, office supplies, windshield washer fluid, those types of things, you reap the benefits of a lower cost. And any, any individual with a business mindset would understand that when you can buy at, at higher quantities, of course, you're going to save on the bottom line locally. And so those are just some of the things that you can appreciate that are benefits certainly of an integrated service delivery model. The one I like to highlight, and I'll highlight as present as today, but a larger number of officers that we draw on for major occurrences and emergencies. And that hits home, I think, or should hit home to the county, whether it's the Godrich tornado, my mind goes back to 2014, I just have a few examples for you, where a missing elderly man suffering from dementia and Alzheimer's went into a field, and it required a significant amount of resources over a protracted period of time for three days. How do you, how do you respond to that as a police service? How do you sustain a search like that? How do you do it with accountability? How do you do it with flexibility? And how do you do it without wearing out your officers? Well, that is where the integrated service delivery model comes into play, because I now have the ability to, to move from Perth County, from Lantton County, from Middlesex, all across southwestern region. In, in the blink of an eye, I can make a request and those resources come pouring in. The tornado again is an excellent resource. The plane crash in Godrich just the other day, Wednesday night, unfortunately, two individuals lost their lives. Before I was on ground, before I was on ground and on my way to that scene, there were multiple officers, there was a dog, there was a helicopter, there were divers, there were all of these resources that were coming. And I believe, and I think you would believe as well, that the families deserve that type of response, and we owe it, I owe it to the public to provide that response. And the OPP provides me the ability to do that with that type of integration. And the ploughing match, I'm thankful it's gone now. It was a lot of work, it was a great time, we had a lot of battles throughout it, we had some good visitors, depending on, on your political viewpoint, but we had some, a lot of work that went into that, and a lot of collaboration with a lot of different partners across Huron County. And was it successful? I would say it's successful, and I tip my hat to the planners. But that also provided us, the OPP, the ability to integrate in service delivery. And how, how did we do that? Well, nobody likes a large overtime bill. So when I can draw from other detachments and mitigate overtime costs, well, it's incumbent upon me to do that. And so at the end of the day, I can present to whoever asks to say, well, this is where I saved money, this is where I saved money, this is how I got this done, this is where, this is where integration really, really works. I'll go to today. And, and while I was on my way up here today, and Chief Tim Poole can attest to this as well, as he was up early this morning, as was I, dealing with an occurrence involving one of your Wingham police officers. How do we support that Wingham police officer? How do we continue an investigation? How did Tim and I begin to collaborate? Well, I can tell you, within the matter of just an hour, that we make phone calls, the OPP makes phone calls, and that integration starts. Crews are found in Listowel. Okay, well then, how do we find the individual that's responsible for engaging a police officer the way that they did? So we have the helicopter, we have members from Perth County, South Bruce, we have members from Huron County, you have all of this large machine, and if you could see it from, from afar, from a bird's eye view, you would see this integration, this harmony, if you will, of policing, coming to catch the bad guy, coming to serve the public, coming to enhance public safety. And so if that doesn't ring true with the integration model of policing that the OPP brings, I'm not quite sure what will. And so that is something that, that is advantageous, and that is something that frankly, we depend on every day. And there are times certainly when Huron County is called upon to assist in that integration service delivery for other counties. And sometimes you get what you give. And so we always, we always help where we can, and we always help and will continue to help despite the costing decision. We'll always continue to work, I believe, collaboratively and positively with the Wingham Police Service. And so those are certainly some examples, I think, that hit home locally to, to speak to integration of service delivery. The proposed detachment structure, as you can see for the, the individuals out in the, in the gallery, I'll just go over this quickly because you might not be able to see the fine print. At the top, there am I, I'm glad there's no pictures, but there's a staff sergeant, we have acting Staff Sergeant Wendy Burrow, she's here with me tonight, and she is really responsible for the daily operations of how things unfold in the county. So it's a big responsibility, it certainly depends on her a fair amount. And as you can see, it starts to branch out with four different platoons, each led by a sergeant. And I can tell you, the sergeants in Huron County are second to none. And then as the numbers roll in, you'll see between 12 and 13 constables that would work a platoon that would service Huron County on every, any given day or night. But again, when we talk about some programs, when we talk about things that, that we do in addition to just frontline platoon policing, you have a sergeant that's in charge of traffic and marine responsibilities. And under that individual are four constables whose focus and whose daily work surrounds traffic safety. All of our officers are enhanced with the, with the eye and the mindset to enhance traffic safety and public safety. But these four officers, one of which is trained in technical collision reconstruction, we have those officers here to help us, and again, to bring a tighter focus to traffic safety across the county, not just in certain municipalities. We have a regional crime sergeant who oversees 11 constables. And for approximately maybe a year now, we've enhanced our ability to combat crime at a street level, property crimes, and I know property crimes are important to North Huron, I know that the drug culture is alive and well across the county of Huron. And so for us now to have four street crime constables, four detectives, whose heartthrob every day is to go out and combat property crimes, theft from motor vehicles, theft of motor vehicles, low-level drug enforcement, those individuals are, are so keenly in tune with the, the drug subculture of Huron County that is alive and well, that, that they have seen significant success in writing search warrants, in really, and liaising with some of your members from the Wingham Police Service as it stands now. Of course, there's some detachment support, and this is where integration really starts to work, when we have additional support in the form of sergeants. So more from an administrative court type of perspective, but those daily tasks, maybe death by a thousand paper cuts, if you will, but certainly, the machine as it works, these individuals, these sergeants make the machine, or the oil in the machine that just make it operate day by day. Enhanced by seven constables, and you might ask the question, well, what do those constables do? Well, I can tell you, one of them is a community safety officer, Constable Jamie Stanley, in our case, an officer who you see on a regular basis, and some sit on committees with them, I can see some heads nodding, so there's some familiarity there. But Jamie is a very, very busy individual, and very accessible, and never says no, and probably should say no sometimes. But those are the, the enhanced capabilities of some of these constables that we have in Huron County. We have an officer that deals with community mobilisation and mental health, and also that's very, very passionate about trying to help people who are in mental health crisis. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few slides to come. We have a school resource officer, and no one can certainly deny the fact that, that the youth in our communities certainly are vulnerable and are presented with a whole bunch of challenges that not necessarily I was when I was in high school, and not necessarily challenges that here at the podium, or maybe even in the body of the room here today are presented with. So they've got a lot on their plate. And so we have a school resource officer that spends time with those individuals doing things that are not only reactive but proactive. We have a detachment analyst, not so new anymore to the OPP, but an officer that sits and analyses data, analyses calls for service, to find out where our pressures are. Where are the theft from motor vehicles? Where are the theft of motor vehicles coming from in Huron County? Where do we need to move the, the machine to have the most applicable and most effective response? Where are we going to have our most impact? Is it traffic issues here and traffic fatalities? Is it theft of motor vehicles up in northern Huron County? And where are we going to, based on analytics, focus our resources and our people? We have two court officers right now, and they're not looking for any more work, they're certainly busy, and I will say, Huron County is, is certainly a place where sometimes criminality seems to get the better of us sometimes, but those officers are very busy working with justice officials. We have an officer that looks after property. You can imagine with all the criminality that takes place and all the seizures that we make, whether it's drugs or guns, or various property bicycles and those kind of things, we have an officer whose full-time job is to look after the vaults to make sure everything is above board when the, the quality assurance people come in and have a look. And so those are some of the, the added constables that we have under those detachment support sergeants. We have three ERC constables, emergency response constables. Those members are Huron County bodies, and they have enhanced training in the, in the realm of emergency response. And so today, for example, when the dog comes out, those members are called out from across the province and sometimes from Huron County to deal with things like a dog track, to follow them, specialised training. And so we certainly, we certainly bring them along and appreciate having three of them here in Huron County. We have a dog in Huron County, not specifically just for Huron County, but it's nice that he lives in our area. So it speeds up the response and just only adds to that integration of the, of the service One might wonder what the detachment response structure would look like in the future. Basically, if you can count to three, which I can barely sometimes, but you count one, two, three, and those are the zones that are in Huron County. As it stands now in northern Huron County, our zone one includes North Huron, and includes various other municipalities, Howick and some of, some of ACW. And then of course, in zone two, you have more central Huron County, which includes obviously Clinton, the municipalities that surround that, and then we move more south... Clinton, the municipalities that surround that, and then we move more south into Zone 3, and that includes a little bit of Bluewater, South Huron. And so those are how, those are how we break up the detachment structure across Huron County. There's another wonderful picture there that kind of illustrates that a little bit more for you, and shows you where the town of Wingham proper would be incorporated if you were to contract the OPP in the future, and it would sit in that Zone 1. So again, the service delivery model that we provide has a constant shift of officers across the county, and you will appreciate, again, the integration service delivery model when you look on that map, and you see South Bruce to the north in Gray County, you see Perth County, you see Middlesex, you see Oxford, you see all of those OPP policed areas. And you have access, I have access to those resources when I need them. And so that just speaks to the proximity of the resources that we need. One of my, one of my most favorite things to talk about is community policing, and not because I'm anything great or wonderful, but I can speak to the great work that our officers have been doing and continue to do in Huron County. Community policing, sometimes people use it as a bit of a buzzword, but really, it's the underpin and undercurrent of what we do every day in policing. I've noticed it more in Huron County probably than any other detachment that I've been at, where officers still know individuals' names in the communities, and the community members know their names, they play hockey together, they do this together, they go to swimming lessons together, their children participate in school activities together. And so that really starts the fundamental principles of community policing. What we've really crystallized in the OPP as far as I'm concerned in the last several years, is not only community policing, but the Ontario's mobilization and engagement model of community policing. And that drives, if you've ever seen, I don't think we have a slide of it, but if you've ever seen the chart of the model, it's colorful, so if you like colors, it's wonderful to look at, but it really pushes in front of your face how we police now as the OPP. And what it does, it shows that the police can't be everything to all people, and so we have to depend on community policing, community partners. And so I'll give you some very, some very quick examples of how the Huron County OPP have dealt with community policing and the Ontario mobilization and engagement model of policing. So Calviere, he called me the other day, he says, I can't fit, I can't fit all of the things you want on the one slide. I just kept writing and writing and writing, and I say, that's a good thing, when I can't stop writing and I can't fit it all on one slide. And so this, some of these things will creep into even your town right now, and you will reap the benefit of it, but of course, more so in the future if you came over to the OPP. So the Huron Perth Situation Table, this was kind of provincially mandated, but there was an officer here in Huron County that really took the bull by the horns, and what she did was she started to contact a bunch of different community members, and this Huron Perth Situation Table is not unlike what you see here on this platform here tonight, where you have a whole bunch of different individuals from the community, from a multidisciplinary perspective, where they each have something to bring to the table, and what they do is they hear cases, individual cases, of people in the community that are at risk, who are suffering, and who have a variety of needs. And so you may have people like the Children's Aid Society, you may have hospitals, you may have, you have the police there, you have Ontario Housing, you have Choices for Change, you have a whole bunch of different entities at the table to bring the resources to these individuals that they need. This is a huge success. It started late in 2015, in 2016, there were over 60 cases brought to this table, which is quite remarkable. So when you think about that, 60 individuals across the community that have suffered acutely from various issues in their lives, that maybe some of us aren't really immune to either, have been provided help and been provided assistance. The OPP Kids Program, that is Jamie Stanley's certainly pride and joy as he moves in and out of the community, and I know has been here in the town of Wingham too, to help with the OPP Kids Program. So that is something that we continue to do to get to the youth, and I'll speak to that in just a few minutes. Safeguard Ontario Break and Enter Support Program, in Huron County now, anybody who's had a break and enter, suffered or been victimized by a break and enter, has the opportunity to have an officer come out, a trained officer, have a look at their property, and do a bit of an environmental assessment, to see, maybe your lights aren't pointed the right way, maybe you have some shrubs that you could clear up a little bit, to target hardened, if you will, your residents, to ensure that the criminal element certainly is provoked to leave your property as opposed to invite them to your property. And so we do very well, in concert with our auxiliary, our volunteer officers, 17 of them across Huron County, devoted over 4,000 hours in 2016, part of that is Safeguard Ontario. We were fortunate enough, and Chief Poole would, I think, join me in this, to do community drug presentations through the Youth Justice Committee across Huron County. We were able to go not only here to Wingham, but to Exeter, and to Godrich, and to host an information session for parents and for teenagers, so they can understand what the dangers of drugs are. Drugs are alive and well in, across the nation, across the world, but that culture is alive and well, as any police officer will tell you in Huron County. And so I think it's vitally important to educate parents, to educate the public, and to educate a variety of different stakeholders, internet safety, bullying, driving, frauds. We're at different community events across the county, Crime Stoppers is something that we share in concert with Perth County. So that's another benefit of integration, and not having one member all the time for many, many years devoted to the Crime Stoppers program. So we're able to collaborate and share with Perth County OPP, so that we don't locally bear that burden all the time. Something I'm particularly passionate about is we have started in the fall this year, Police Youth Advisory Council, and this is an opportunity where I saw we need to get to the, we need to get to the youth, to the teens of this community, to prevent crime, to be proactive, we need to listen to youth, and we need to address them before they get into, into the criminal element in Huron County or abroad. And so this is a new program, it will be the first in the province for the OPP. So it's groundbreaking, and it's an opportunity for youth across Huron County to sit down with the police, not be tattletales, but to listen to some of the issues that exist in their community, and to become creative, and to become innovative about how they can be a part of the solution, and not be part of the problem. And so I have a lot of, a lot of hopes and dreams for that council, and you'll have to stay tuned for that. Some OPP recruitment initiatives, I can tell you, not too long ago, in Clinton, in central Huron, our recruiter, Constable Gloria Hoo, came to Huron County because we were trying to starm up interest in applying to the OPP. We had over 60 people attend that event, and one officer just graduated this week from the Provincial Police Academy, starts this week in Huron County, so I believe that's a success. To get homegrown people who are from Huron County, who know the community, who know the people, who know the trends, have them here and have them stay here. One of the programs that we hit hard across the, across the county is Lock It or Lose It, and I know you're battling this issue in North Huron now, and please, believe me, we're acutely aware of it, and not only that, but the rest of the county is suffering from theft of, theft of motor vehicles. And so in 2015, 2016, we launched a pretty significant initiative that included Lock It or Lose It, to try and educate the public, and if I could, I'm going to go sidebar here for just a second, you'll excuse me, but I might go on a tangent. If I could train, and if I could educate the public to not leave their keys in their vehicle, I can't help it, but I have an audience here tonight, and it's a captive audience, but if I could, if I could ask one thing of the community is to not leave your keys in your vehicle, not only that, but please don't start it for the person who's looking to steal it as well. That is a huge and systemic problem across the county, maybe a bit cultural in its origin, but that is when my one plea, the Lock It or Lose It, please, it snowballs into the drug world, it snowballs into public safety as people run to and fro from across the county, putting people's lives in danger. So I'll get off my soapbox on that one, but you have the power to spread that word, so please, please do so. Project Lifesaver is something we've been working on for a couple of years across Huron County, and it provoked me in 2014, when I was here, sitting in Wendy's chair as the staff sergeant for a few months, and we dealt with that elderly man that was missing for three days. And Project Lifesaver, I have come to know and embrace from my time down in Essex County outside of Windsor, and this provides a bracelet, a tracking bracelet, training from our emergency response team members and road officers as well, to be able to find a missing loved one in a matter of seconds sometimes. And so I approached different agencies across the county, and of course, nobody ever has any money, and nobody, I can't this and I can't that, so the Huron County, I was able to bend and twist their arms, and I hope to be able to launch that in the fall of this year, to provide that as another, another tool for public safety. And again, certainly interested in talking a little bit more about that. A vulnerable person registry is something that we could look at, is something that, you know, could move into the future, probably in consult with the county of Huron. Standardized public reporting tools, North Huron would understand some of these reports that they receive from me now on a quarterly basis, so hopefully some heads will nod, and there'll be some familiarity and recognition, that on a quarterly basis, what I provide for you, based on the billing model, is I provide you a call for service billing summary report. And what it does, it gives you a snapshot in a point of time, to give you an idea of where we're spending some of our time, where you're spending some of your money, and it provokes a conversation, or should provoke a conversation, about how we can address certain issues, and how we can mitigate some of the costs associated to policing. And so that comes to you right now, on a quarterly basis, in the Section 10 contracts that I meet with on a monthly basis, or some of them on a quarterly basis, not only are they provided with that report, but they're also provided with a Police Services Board report that is very standardized, and gets down to some different information, differently explained versus the call for service billing summary report. And so I present that to the Police Services Board, and it provokes, again, some, some good conversation about where the pressures are in relation to policing, and holds me accountable to the Police Services Board, and ultimately to the public, for them to, you know, to address what I'm doing in response to what they're seeing in numbers and where the pressures are operationally. The OPP Contract Policing, so I, as you would know, and you certainly achieve this now through Chief Tim Poole, that he is accountable to council, and that goes for me too, as the detachment commander involved in the municipalities across Huron County, I have no issue with the fact that I am accountable to the public, and I am accountable to the council through the Police Services Board, and that certainly wouldn't change as we move forward, if you, your decision was to take on the OPP. And it certainly provides immediate access to all specialized services, and we've talked about the fact that we deliver a wide range of community programs. Some numbers that are certainly current, 98.6 of respondents, and this is for Huron County, felt very safe and safe in Huron County detachment area, so I look for the 2.4 that's missing, and I look for the fact that what can I do for the 2.4? How do I fix that? How do I address those needs and what are those needs? 96.3% of respondents were very satisfied, are satisfied with the quality of police services provided by Huron County detachment of the OPP. So then I look at the rest of that number, and I say, so how can we, how can we do better? And so I have no issue saying and listening to what the concerns are and how we can make things better. So with that, I'm going to sit down, have an ice drink of water, and turn it back over to Calviere.
Thank you, Inspector. That was a very detailed and passionate presentation there. You have now heard about the services we can provide to you on a provincial, regional, and detachment level, along with the local operational plan of the detachment. Over the next several slides, we will go over information relating to the transition contract, staffing numbers, as well as the contract proposal costs. Should the township of North Huron-Wingham accept the OPP's proposal, you will enter into a transition contract before being integrated into the OPP billing model. Why a transition contract? Ontario Regulation 267 Sub-14, which was enacted January 1st, 2015, deals with how we bill municipalities. The regulation is specific to municipalities currently policed by the OPP. New municipalities that amalgamate with the OPP need to go through a transition contract before being integrated into the current OPP billing model. Another reason deals with the collection of historical data, referred to as DARP, or Daily Activity Reporting. In order for the OPP to effectively integrate new municipalities into the billing model, we require a history of data. To accomplish this, municipalities are required to enter into a three-plus-year contract first, so that activity data can be collected from our officers. The final reason involves the Ontario Civilian Police Commission. I will refer to them as OCPC. In order for a municipality to change their police service arrangements, the OCPC must provide approval. Two of the commission's main goals are to ensure that, A, the new policing arrangement will provide adequate and effective policing services for your municipality, and that the employees of the police service are dealt with in a reasonable manner. The commission measures police service using full-time equivalents, referred to as FTEs. As such, an FTE-based transition contract allows them to assess the adequacy of the new policing arrangement. The transition contract is based on FTEs or full-time equivalents. As such, the agreement provides your municipality with a defined number of contractual hours of service. One FTE is equivalent to 1,417 hours. This is an availability factor used to identify time spent in your community where an officer is providing proactive policing service or responding to calls for service. They are what we call boots-on-the-ground hours. For example, in your case, Wingham would have 7.16 uniform FTEs. When you multiply that by 1,417 hours, it means you would receive 10,145 hours of service per year. For those of you wondering why the plus in three-plus years, it's because the contract ends at the end of the year so that it aligns with the OPP billing model, which is based on a calendar year. To further explain, if Wingham were to sign a contract starting, let's say, the 1st of October 2018, it would expire on December 31st, 2021. The length of the transition contract would be three years and three months, after which Wingham would be built based on the OPP billing model. Here is a staffing chart. The first column, present here, shows your police services current complement. The second column shows the current Huron County OPP detachment's complement. The third column shows the proposed amalgamated structure, and the fourth column shows the portion that the township of North Huron-Wingham will be built for during the transition contract period, right here. As part of the integrated detachment, Wingham's share of the detachment commander and the detachment operations manager, also referred to as a staff sergeant, has been calculated at 0.16, that is 0.08% each, as shown here in column four. That percentage represents Wingham's share of the uniform complement. Regarding Wingham's chief position, should Chief Poole choose to join the OPP, his rank would be determined through an OPP rank determination process. For the purpose of balancing the FTE count, the chief's position has been included in the constable count by this designation. The sergeant position has been added as such. A workload analysis was done to compare the call volume provided to us by Wingham Police Service with the current complement strength of five frontline constables. The police officers in Wingham are currently responding to approximately 279 calls for service per officer, calculated on a three-year average. Our workload analysis has determined that Wingham will continue to require a Nuestro análisis de carga de trabajo ha determinado que Wingham continuará requiriendo un mínimo de cinco constables y el coste ha sido preparado para reflejar esto. Así que serían cinco aquí. El extra que tenemos aquí sería la posición del jefe Poole, que ha sido tomada como un complemento constable por ahora. Una administradora de detenciones de tiempo completo se agregará al condado de Huron. Wingham actualmente tiene un administrador de tiempo parcial. Removimos la posición de tiempo parcial de Wingham y actualmente presente en el condado de Huron, hemos agregado una posición de tiempo completo que hace que esté más alineado con nuestras averages provinciales. Juntos, Wingham sería proporcionado los servicios y construiría 7.16 FTEs uniformes y una FTE civil, un total de 8.16 FTEs. Si pudieras referirte al documento de propuesta de policía de contrato y turnar a la página 9, romperé la página de resumen del coste en tres secciones. Usamos la fórmula de recuperación de costes para calcular el costo de la policía de nuestras municipalidades. Esta fórmula es actualizada anualmente para reflejar las tasas para ese año. Donde hay notaciones, más clarificación se proporciona en la página 10. Así que verás tales notas como aquí. Las tasas de salario para cada rango están basadas en averages pesados. Las tasas de salario, salarios de vacaciones estatutales y premios de cambio son reconciliados con el promedio provincial para el año presupuestal. El tiempo de descanso se asignará a la municipalidad basado en su actual tiempo de descanso incurrido en el año aplicable. Abajo está el costo de salario y beneficio para la posición de una FTE civil. Ahora veremos en el medio de la página de resumen de la propuesta de contrato, al área titulada salario y beneficios de personalidad. Ejemplos de personalidad de apoyo incluyen despacheros, guardias, tecnología y personal de apoyo radio. Para que el servicio policial funcione, requerimos personalidad de apoyo. Estos servicios de apoyo son construidos en una base per oficial. Para Wingham, el cálculo sería 7.16 para representar tu contabilidad de FTE uniforme, multiplicado por la tasa en la columna media. Estos son costos per oficial individual. Todo lo que tienes que hacer es multiplicar eso por 7.16 para lograr el costo final. MPB, o bureau de policía municipal, lidera el proyecto que revisa y refresca la fórmula de coste cada año. El proceso de revisión se realiza en consulta con personal en todos los comandos a través del OPP y todos estos servicios de apoyo son cobardos en una base per oficial. Es importante notar que los costes son una representación justa de los costes de proporcionar policía municipal y que no son todos inclusivos. La adición de un nuevo costo a la fórmula puede requerir aprobación del Consejo de Tesoro. Otros gastos de operación directa, o ODOE. También recupera los otros gastos de operación directa en una base per oficial. Así que, nuevamente, para calcular estas gastos, multiplicas la columna media por 7.16 FTEs uniformes, para lograr el número final. También notarás un ajuste de un año de 12,145 dólares. Debido a que el uniforme y el equipamiento son construidos en el costo inicial, que verás en la siguiente página, no se requiere pagar por el costo per oficial en el primer año. Si te vuelves a la página 11 de tu documento de propuesta, esta página aborda los costes de inicio de una startup. Hay requerimientos de equipamiento y vehículos uniformes según la amalgamación. Las cantidades requeridas están listadas junto con precios de unidad y totales. La total inicial coste, incluyendo 30,000 dólares para un nuevo gran sistema de radio, hará que el total sea de 206,738 dólares como tu total inicial coste. Esta slade resume las estimadas costes de policía y iniciales que verás en tu propuesta. Salarios totales y beneficios. 1,061,259. Salarios de personalidad y beneficios. Gastos de operación directa. 93,706 dólares. Con un coste estimado de aproximadamente 1.2 millones. Recibirás un ajuste de un año en tu uniforme y equipamiento, equivalente a 12,145 dólares. Con tu costo de startup y capital de 206,738 dólares, tu total coste estimado, incluyendo los costes iniciales para tu primer año, sería aproximadamente 1.4 millones. Como señalado en la parte inferior de la slade, la propuesta y los costes son válidos durante seis meses desde la presentación de hoy, o hasta el 25 de marzo de 2018. Si la municipalidad elige aceptar la propuesta del OPP, los miembros amalgamados estarán reportando a nuestro condado de Huron, OPP, que está siendo finalizado y estará construido en el futuro próximo. En el interno, los miembros reportarán al oficina de satélite de Wingham del OPP ubicada en 30 Terrace, Bristol, aquí en Wingham, aproximadamente a un kilómetro de allí. Una visita a la instalación del servicio policial de Wingham fue llevada a cabo en septiembre de 2016. El OPP ha completado una evaluación de capacidad comprensiva como resultado de la visita. Confirmamos que no utilizaremos la instalación de servicio policial actual y que todos los miembros estarán reportando en el interno al oficina de satélite de Wingham del OPP antes de que nuestro condado de Huron sea construido. Habrá algunas pequeñas adiciones que tendrán que hacer con nuestra instalación existente que se harán a la expensas de la municipalidad para acoger a los miembros amalgamados. Proporcionamos una reunión tan pronto como sea posible con el comité de coste para discutir estos problemas. Tendremos a los miembros de la sección de instalaciones del OPP en esta reunión para entregar el reporte y asistir con la discusión. gestión de información de registros, o REM. Incluido en tu propuesta está un appendix que habla de la gestión de información de registros, también referido como REM. Nuestra unidad REM evalúa tus registros físicos y electrónicos durante nuestra visita a la localidad, así como el estado del espacio de almacenamiento. Nuestra unidad REM trabajará colaborativamente con tu municipalidad y el servicio policial de Wingham para asegurar que los requisitos legislativos y regulatorios han sido cumplidos y que todos los tres áreas estén en excelencia si la amalgamación se mueve adelante. Hay otras consideraciones financieras que no forman parte de esta propuesta, ya que son la responsabilidad de la municipalidad. Listos aquí son algunos de los ejemplos, como mantener un consejo de servicios policiales, cualquier costo aplicable asociado al almacenamiento de registros electrónicos y físicos, disposición de tus activos actuales, severances para empleados municipales según tus acuerdos colectivos, costos para modificar la instalación y pensiones. Toma tu tiempo para revisar la información que hemos proporcionado. Cualquier pregunta puede ser coordinada a través de el Sr. Duane Evans y responderemos de manera apropiada. Hay información sobre el OPP y los servicios que proporcionamos en nuestro sitio web en www.opp.ca. Si buscas el bureau de policía municipal desde la página principal, encontrarás información adicional y recursos que deberían responder algunas de tus preguntas. Haz libre de dirigir a tus residentes esta información también. Los siguientes pasos se cubrieron en la slade si la propuesta es aceptada, incluyendo la audiencia de la OCPC y otras sesiones de información. Si la propuesta no es aceptada, entonces esperamos seguir con la misma excelente relación de trabajo con tu servicio policial con el objetivo común de mantener la seguridad y seguridad de todos los residentes y visitantes de este área. Esto concluye la presentación. Me gustaría agradecer mucho tu tiempo hoy. También me gustaría darle un agradecimiento especial al Sr. Larry McGregor por su ayuda a través del proceso de propuesta, el CEO del Sr. Duane Evans y el jefe Poole por su ayuda en facilitar el desarrollo de esta propuesta. Muchas gracias.
Para los miembros del consejo, ¿hay preguntas de clarificación? Consellor Martin.
Tengo una pregunta sobre la relación entre el servicio de Wingham, si fuéramos a ir con el OPP, y las otras partes de los otros consejos. ¿Hay algún alcance de escala que favorezca y reduzca el costo para los otros dos consejos si fuéramos a tomar el contrato del OPP?
Eso no estaba preparado para esta noche. Esta presentación está para los costes del consejo de Wingham solo. Eso no era parte de la solicitud al OPP para el coste. ¿Estoy correcto en eso, Colbert?
Creo que va a ser relevante en algún momento.
El total reporte es mucha información y creo que lo que el consejo estará haciendo es una moción para aceptar la información para estudiar y que veremos qué preguntas van adelante. Y cuando pasemos a través de algunos de los modelos y introduzcamos cifras para qué costes posibles después del contrato de transición, que necesitará un poco de tiempo para averiguarlos. Si hay... Oh, Consellor Sykes.
Sí, la única pregunta que tengo es que has mencionado sobre la instalación de detenciones de Wingham, pero no has mencionado nada sobre el inventario existente que el servicio policial tiene, activos que sí. Supongo, basado en lo que he leído y basado en la información, que ninguno de eso va a ser tomado en cuenta en la amalgamación. ¿Es eso correcto?
Como indicado, lo que haríamos es emitir nuevo equipamiento y recursos a la complemento de Wingham aquí, que incluye vehículos nuevos, uniformes, opciones de fuerza, así que se queda consistente en todo el condado provincial y en consonancia con nuestra academia de policía provincial en Aurelia también. El servicio policial y la municipalidad estarían responsables de la disposición de tus activos. Partes ciertas de los activos, como ciertos armamentos, radar, equipamiento, pueden ser considerados, pero no querríamos decir nada confirmado ahora mismo. Así que sería mejor tener en mente que puedes disposar de esos activos tú mismo.
Gracias.
Consellor Ritzman.
Sí. Así que, solo para que podamos tener una buena idea de cuál será el nivel de servicios que va a verse a medida que avance, nuestros actuales oficiales de policía municipal tienen trabajos en el terreno, constantemente realizando chequeos, especialmente en la noche, en los garros industriales. ¿Qué va a verse a medida que avance para nosotros? ¿Serán todavía costes adicionales arriba y abajo? ¿O todavía seremos capaces de tener esas cosas y qué va a verse?
Este será un pregunta operacional para el inspektor.
¿Me escuchas bien? ¿Cómo está ahora? ¿Más bien? Así que esas son las cosas que hacemos ahora como el OPP. Así que no verías, no verías un cambio en eso. Nuevamente, la forma en que policemos está basada en analytics. Así que puede verse, de hecho, una mayor presencia basado en algunos de los problemas que estás teniendo. Y nuevamente, vuelvo a la modela de integración y la capacidad que tienes para todo el condado, pero también los condados vecinos también. Hemos hecho iniciativas jointes en el pasado con otros detenciones, específicamente en el condado de Norte, que proporciona una mayor presencia. Y no es de ningún costo extra. Nadie va a obtener billos adicionales al final del día. Es solo una presión operativa basada en nuestros análisis y lanzamos más recursos aditivos. Pero eso continúa, por supuesto, en todo el condado, ¿verdad? Así que no hay conducción sin objectivo. Los problemas son abordados con el mayor impacto, pero sin ningún costo extra.
Vaya.
Bien. La otra pregunta que tuve fue que hemos oído de otras municipalidades que han cambiado de su fuerza de policía municipal a el OPP. Y supongo que después de que el contrato transicional de tres años más se termine, han visto un aumento en sus costes de presupuesto del OPP. Así que hipotéticamente eso podría pasar aquí. ¿Y cómo nos preparamos para eso? ¿Y qué va a verse? ¿Cómo podemos ver esa potencial aumento de costes llegando?
Así que estás hablando de los costes que pasarían en el año cuatro, ¿es eso correcto? Cuando entras en el modelo de presupuesto del OPP. Creo que una cosa que definitivamente sería una buena manera de explorar mientras el consejo está tomando esta decisión es llegar a comparables municipalidades para ver realmente qué ha pasado allí. De todas las municipalidades que se están pidiendo ahora, ya que se ha introducido el modelo de presupuesto del OPP, tenemos un número de costes en camino y no han llegado al final de un periodo de tres años más donde están viendo algún aumento en este momento. Pero creo que la mejor respuesta para eso sería poder llegar a otras municipalidades similares en tamaño. Teníamos municipalidades en todo el condado que estaban bajo un modelo de FTE, modelo de recuperación de costes, antes de la introducción del modelo de presupuesto del OPP, el nuevo modelo que llegó a efecto el 1 de enero de 2015. Y fuera de ese tiempo, entonces podrías ver realmente cuáles son los números para esas municipalidades también. También me animaría a esta municipalidad a llegar a algunas de las municipalidades más recientemente amalgamadas y preguntarles cuál es su experiencia personal en eso, costes. Generalmente, en todo el condado, nuestro coste por propiedad promedio es bastante justo, a 355 dólares por propiedad en todo el condado.
¿Hay más preguntas? Bien, ¿puedo hacer una moción para aceptar? Oh, pregunta.
No, haré una moción.
Para aceptar la información. Gracias, Consellor Nott. Segundo, Consellor Hallahan. Todo a favor. Gracias. Pasaremos al confirmatorio de ley. Ley número 85, 2017, siendo una ley del condado de Norte, para confirmar generalmente las acciones anteriores del consejo y del condado de Norte. Se introdujo, red, una primera, segunda, tercera y última vez, firmado por el juez Raven y encadenado en el bloque de ley. Counselor Martin moves. Counselor Ritzman-Denega seconds. All in favor? Carry. Okay. Seeing that all points on the agenda are covered except adjournment, being that there be no further business before us, can I have a motion for adjournment? Counselor Knott, Counselor Sykes? All in favor? Thank you. That's carry. Official meeting is done. Thank you for all those attending, and be sure that if there's questions, write them to our CAO, Dwayne Evans, and we will ensure that a written response is received to them. Thank you for attending.
His manager, also referred to as the staff sergeant, has been calculated at 0.16. That is 0.08% each, as shown here in column four. That percentage represents Wingham's share of the uniform complement. Regarding Wingham's chief position, should Chief Poole choose to join the OPP, his rank would be determined through an OPP rank determination process. For the purpose of balancing the FTE count, the chief's position has been included in the constable count by this designation. The sergeant position has been added as such. A workload analysis was done to compare the call volume provided to us by Wingham Police Service with the current complement strength of five frontline constables. The police officers in Wingham are currently responding to approximately 279 calls per service per officer, calculated on a three-year average. Our workload analysis has determined that Wingham will continue to require a minimum of five constables, and the costing has been prepared to reflect this. So, it would be five here. The extra one that we have here would be Chief Poole's position that's been taken as a constable complement for now. One full-time detachment administrative clerk will be added to the Huron County detachment. Wingham currently has one part-time administrative clerk. We have removed the part-time position from Wingham and currently present at the Huron County detachment, and have added a single full-time position, which makes it more aligned with our provincial averages. Together, Wingham would be provided the services of and billed for 7.16 uniform FTEs and one civilian FTE, a total of 8.16 FTEs. If you could refer to your contract policing proposal document and turn to page nine, I will break up the costing summary page into three sections. We use a cost recovery formula to calculate the cost of policing our municipalities. This formula is updated annually to reflect the rates for that year. Where there are notations, further clarification are provided on page 10, so you will see such notes as right here. Salary rates for each rank are based on weighted averages. Salary rates, statutory holiday payouts, and shift premiums are reconciled to the provincial average for the billing year. Overtime will be allocated to the municipality based on their actual overtime incurred in the applicable year. Below is the salary and benefit cost for the one civilian FTE position. Now, we will look at the middle of the contract proposal summary page to the area titled "Support Staff Salary and Benefits." Examples of support staff include dispatchers, guards, technology, and radio support staff. For a police service to function, we require support staff. These support staff services are built on a per-officer basis. For Wingham, the calculation would be 7.16 to represent your uniform FTE count, multiplied by the rate in the middle column. These are per-individual officer costs, so all you have to do is multiply that by 7.16 to achieve the final cost. MPP, or Municipal Policing Bureau, leads the project that reviews and refreshes the costing formula each year. The review process is done in consultation with staff in all commands throughout the OPP, and all these support services are charged on a per-officer basis. It is important to note that the costs are a fair representation of the costs to provide municipal policing, and that they are not all-inclusive. The addition of a new cost to the formula may require Treasury Board approval. Other direct operating expenditures, or ODOE. We also recover the other direct operating expenses on a per-officer basis. So, again, to calculate these expenses, you multiply the middle column by 7.16 uniform number FTEs to achieve the final number. You will also note a one-year adjustment of $12,145. Because uniform and equipment is billed in the initial cost, which you will see on the next page, you are not required to pay for the per-officer cost in the first year. If you turn to page 11 of your proposal document, this page addresses initial one-time startup costs. There are uniform, equipment, and vehicle requirements upon amalgamation. The quantities required are listed along with unit prices and totals. The initial...the total initial cost, including $30,000 for a new big radio system, will bring the total to $206,738 as your total initial cost. This slide summarizes the estimated policing and initial cost that you will see in your proposal. Total salaries and benefits? Support staff salaries and benefits? $105,195. Other direct operating expenses? $93,706, with an estimated policing cost of approximately $1.2 million. You will receive a one-year adjustment on your uniform and equipment, equivalent to $12,145. With your one-time startup cost and capital cost of $206,738, your total estimated cost, including initial cost for your first year, would be approximately $1.4 million. As noted at the bottom of the slide, the proposal and costs are valid for six months from today's presentation or until the 25th of March, 2018. If the municipality chooses to accept the OPP proposal, amalgamated members will be reporting to our Huron County OPP detachment, which is being finalized and will be constructed in the near future. In the interim, members will report to the Wingham Satellite Office of the OPP located at 30 Bristol Terrace, here in Wingham, approximately a kilometer away. A site visit to the Wingham Police Service facility was conducted in September of 2016. The OPP has completed a comprehensive capacity assessment as a result of the visit. We've confirmed that we will not be utilizing the current Wingham Police Service facility, and that all members would be reporting to in the interim at the OPP Wingham Satellite Office before our Huron County detachment is constructed. There will be some minor additions that will...that would have to be made with our existing facility, that would be done at the municipality's expense to accommodate the amalgamating members. We propose a meeting as soon as possible with the costing committee to discuss these issues. We will have members of the OPP facility section at this meeting to deliver the report and to assist with the discussion. Records Information Management, or RIM. Included in your proposal is an appendix that speaks to the records and information management, also referred to as RIM. Our RIM unit assesses your physical and electronic records during our site visit, as well as the state of the storage space. Our RIM unit will work collaboratively with your municipality and the Wingham Police Service to ensure that legislative and regulatory requirements have been met, and that all three areas are in excellent shape should amalgamation move ahead. There are other financial considerations that don't form part of this proposal, as they are the responsibility of the municipality. Listed here are some of the examples, such as maintaining a police service board, any applicable costs associated to the storage of electronic and physical records, disposal of your current assets, severances for municipal employees according to your collective agreements, costs to modify the facility, and pension disinvestment. Take your time to review the information we've provided. Any questions can be coordinated through Mr. Dwayne Evans, and we will respond accordingly. There is information about the OPP and the services we provide on our website at www.opp.ca. If you search for Municipal Policing Bureau from the main page, you will find additional information and resources that should answer some of your questions. Feel free to direct your residents to this information as well. The next steps are covered off on the slide if the proposal is accepted, including the OCPC hearing and other information sessions. If the proposal is not accepted, then we hope to carry on with the same excellent working relationship with your police service with the common goal of maintaining the safety and security of all residents and visitors to this area. This concludes the presentation. I'd like to thank you very much for your time today. I would also like to give a special thanks to Mr. Larry McGregor for his assistance throughout the proposal process, the CAO, Mr. Dwayne Evans, and Chief Poole for their assistance in facilitating the development of this proposal. Thank you very much.
From council members, is there any questions of clarification? Counselor Martin?
I have a question regarding the relationship between the Wingham service, if we were to go with the OPP, and the other parts of the other wards. Are there any economies of scale that we would advantage and reduce the cost for the other two wards if we were to take the OPP contract?
That wasn't prepared for tonight. This presentation is on for costs for the Wingham ward alone. That was not part of the request to the OPP for the costing. Am I correct in that, Culver?
I think it's going to be relevant at some point.
The total report is a lot of information, and I think that what council will be doing is a motion to accept the information for study, and that we will see what questions come forward, and that when we go through some of the models and plug in figures for what possible costs after the transition contract, that we will need a little bit of time to figure those out. If there's...oh, Counselor Sykes?
Yes, the one question I have is, you mentioned about the Wingham detachment facility, but you haven't mentioned anything about the existing inventory that the police service has, assets that per se. I'm assuming based on what I'm read and based on the information, that none of that is going to be taken into account at amalgamation. Is that correct?
As stated, what we would be doing is we would be issuing brand-new equipment and resources to the Wingham complement here, which includes new vehicles, uniforms, use of force options, so it stays consistent across the board provincially and in accordance with our provincial police academy in Orelia as well. The police service and the municipality would be responsible for the disposal of your assets. Certain parts of the assets, such as certain firearms, radar, equipment, can be considered, but we would not want to say anything in firm to you right now, so it would be better to consistently have the mindset of you may have to dispose of those assets yourself.
Thank you.
Counselor Ritzman-Denega?
Yes. So, just so we can have a good idea of what the level of services is going to look like going forward, our current municipal police officers have boots on the ground, they're constantly doing checks, especially at night, on storefronts and in the industrial area, like going forward for us. Will we still...will that be an added cost above and beyond, or will we still be able to have those things and what will that cost?
This will be an operational question for Inspector Union.
Can you hear me okay? How about now? Better? So, those are things that we do now as the OPP. So, you wouldn't see a change in that. Again, the way we police is based on analytics. So, you may see, in fact, an increased presence based on some of the problems that you're having. And again, I go back to the integration model and the ability you have for the entire county, but neighboring counties as well. We have done joint initiatives in the past with other detachments, specifically actually in North Huron, that provide an added presence, and it's at no extra cost. Nobody's going to get extra bills at the end of the day. It's just an operational pressure based on our analytics, and we throw more resources at it. But that continues, of course, in the entire county, right? So, there's no aimless driving. The problems are addressed with the greatest of impact, but at no extra cost.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other question I had was, we've heard other municipalities that have switched from their municipal police force to the OPP, and I'm assuming that after that three-plus-year transitional contract is up, they've seen an increase in their OPP billing costs. So hypothetically, that could happen here, and how do we prepare ourselves for that? And what is that going to look like? How do we...how can we see that potential cost increase coming?
So, you're talking about the cost that would be incurred in year four, is that correct?
Correct.
When entering the OPP billing model? I think one thing that would be definitely a good avenue to explore as council is making this decision is to reach out to comparable municipalities to actually see what's happened there. Out of any of the municipalities that are asking now, since the introduction of the OPP billing model, we have a number of crossings on the go, and they haven't come to the end of a term of the three-plus-year where they're seeing any increase at this time. But I think the best answer for that would be able to... But I think the best answer for that would be able to reach out to other like municipalities for size-wise. We did have municipalities across the province that were under an FTE model, cost recovery model, prior to the introduction of the OPP billing model, the new model that came into effect on January 1st, 2015. And out of that time, then you could see really what the numbers are for those municipalities as well. I would also encourage this municipality to reach out to some of the most recently amalgamated municipalities and ask them what their personal experience is on that cost-wise. Overall, across the province, our average per-property cost is quite fair at $355 per property across the province.
Is there any more questions? Okay, could I motion to accept... Oh, question?
No, I'll make a motion.
To accept for information? Thank you, Counselor Knott. Seconder, Counselor Hallahan. All in favor? Thank you. We will move to the confirmatory bylaw, bylaw number 85, 2017, being a bylaw of the Township of North Huron to confirm generally previous actions of the council of the Township of North Huron. We introduced, read, a first, second, third, and final time, signed by the Raven Clerk and engrossed in the bylaw block. Counselor Knott moves. Counselor Ritzman-Tenenga seconds. All in favor? Carrie? Okay. Seeing that all points on the agenda are covered except adjournment, being that there be no further business before us, can I have a motion for adjournment? Counselor Knott, Counselor Syke. All in favor? Thank you. That's Carrie. Official meeting is done. Thank you for all those attending. And be sure that if there's questions, write them to our CAO, Dwayne Evans, and we will ensure that a written response is received to them. Thank you for attending.